Okay. Good evening. We previously opened the meeting at 6:30 PM, an executive session, so we're going to continue the meeting at this time. The first item on the agenda is public input. I'm going to hold off on that because I think we are going to have a discussion regarding the naming of public buildings, so I'm going to jump right to Gabrielle Lanzaro and ask her for the school report tonight.
So, some notable academic matters. Quarter one ended last Friday on November 7th. Parent-teacher conferences will be held on November 24th. And Science Club went to the annual pumpkin chumpin' at Teradyne on October 29th, and they stayed after to help clean up the pumpkins in exchange for a donation from Teradyne. The French language class leaves on Thursday for their trip to Quebec City, and they'll arrive back to North Reading on Saturday. And Jackie Lanzaro, my sister, is the recipient...
I'm not going to mic her away.
Is the recipient of the Certificate of Academic Excellence sponsored by Massachusetts Association of Schools to Superintendent. She's also the valedictorian of the graduating class 2015.
Wow.
And some notable fine arts matters is that the Veterans Day assembly was held today. The band and chorus performed, and veterans from the community were invited to come to the ceremony. Auditions were held last week for Masquerade Winter Show of Peter Pan. And the student council held their annual talent show. Valerie Sevens was the winner singing Halo, and it was great success. There was a big crowd. And notable athletic matters, the boys and soccer, boys and girls soccer are both in the state tournament right now. Girls soccer won last Wednesday in double overtime versus Newburyport, 1-0. And they play tonight versus Womp Scott in the semifinals.
So, what's up?
They won 1-0.
So, they'll be advancing to the finals.
And I want to say I was there and I was late for executive session. I'm sorry, everybody. I was stepping in.
Well, I'm sorry.
And the boys soccer, they won last Friday in overtime, home versus Watertown, 1-0. So, they'll play again Wednesday versus either Wilmington or Weston. Craft Country had their final meet last Saturday, and Jacob Cornell was ranked number six in Eastern Massachusetts. The Cheerleaders competed at Cal's last Thursday, and they placed second overall. And football had their last home game of the season last Friday, so this was the senior night for the football players and the cheerleaders. And they won 21-0 versus Penn Tucket. And they'll play their last regular season game this Friday at Ubray Court. Some other items is that the student council October food drive has come to an end. We met our goal of 5,000 items. And the student council masquerade-themed dance will be held at North Reading High School on the 21st of November.
Thank you, Gabrielle. Any student work called?
Yep. So, for my 10th grade English class, we had to make a brochure, and we've been reading this book called Cat's Cradle, and in the book, there's like a fake religion called Moconism. So, my teacher, Mr. Nosi, told us that we have to create an informational brochure, and we were kind of converting to this religion, and we had to spread this religion to the public and our knowledge about it. So, we had to create kind of like a cover page, and then on the inside, we had to include key terms and like information about the religion. And then on the back, we had to create two to three calypso's or like verses that expressed the main views of Moconism.
Now, what's a selling point of Moconism?
It's basically a religion that's like based on lies, and so people believe in lies.
Based on lies?
Yeah.
So, for lawyers? You would find a religion anyway. Thank you very much, Gabrielle. Any questions from the committee?
No, very pleased. We have, we have two, is this the first time we've had siblings as student representatives in the same year? I can't remember.
I think it is. I think it is, yeah.
Glad to have it.
Here, a soft one?
Yeah.
So, we have the Lanzaro tradition will continue for at least another two years.
Yeah.
It's excellent.
And congratulations to all the athletic teams. It's turned into being a very good fall season. It's started a little slow. The football teams come on, the soccer teams are doing fantastic, the cheerleaders did really well.
Volleyball made the states.
Volleyball made the states, so this has turned into a real good sports season. Anything else, Gabrielle? Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You probably have homework to do.
Yeah.
There's no school tomorrow.
Yeah.
That was your excuse to get out of here. But seriously, runway, you can't go stay early. Pretty boring, all right? But thank you very much.
Thanks.
Okay, I'm going to jump again. I see that Allison Kane is here, and I think Allison, you probably have a pretty quick request for a trip.
Yes.
Do you want to do that now so that we can get you out of here?
Great. Awesome. Here? Haven't been in this space.
Why don't you, why don't you come up front a little bit?
Come up, okay, great.
Allison, I'll give you the floor.
Awesome. Good evening. So, every other year, the music and performing arts department likes to try to take a trip to New York City, and we like to try to do it in one weekend. It's an overnight trip of one night. We leave on a Saturday morning. We go to New York as a group. They take Broadway classes, so they can take, a favorite is stage combat, so that's one that they always want to take again, and these are with professionals. Musical theater class, summer vocal techniques. Some kids won an audition and a tech theater class this year, so we're trying to set that up for them. We try to see two to three Broadway shows. We include meals at a singing later and waitress establishment, and then another lunch in maybe a beach or someplace to give them a New York feel. We stay in Times Square. We stay overnight one night, and the next day, kind of repeat the whole thing. They possibly take another class, depending on how the times line up. We try to see a matinee, and then we come home Sunday night. And it's a great opportunity for them to see professionals in the work they have. Last time we went, we got a talkback with Newsies, and they got to talk to some of the students, and two of the boys are from Massachusetts. They were twins, 17-year-old twins, and so they got to talk back with the kids, which was really cool. And they also get to see stage managers in the backside of theater and management, so it kind of covers everything that has to do with performing-based and give them a little bit of a taste of what's out there in the real world should they choose to pursue or at least enlighten them.
Thank you, Allison. Any questions from the committee? How many kids go?
We have 50, we take a bus of 55.
Wow. So, how many people, how many chaperones?
We currently have seven chaperones onboard, all staff, music staff actually, elementary and middle school music teachers, and Eric Foreman and myself, and Mrs. Foreman and Mr. Kane.
Okay, if there's no questions, I'd ask for a motion for approval of the trip. Motion from Janine, a second from, second from Cliff. Any further discussion? Are you going to also fairly say aye? Aye opposed, unmotion carries, my vote four to nothing. Thank you, Allison.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
I am going to jump back. I know Valerie's here, definitely able to run the latest discussion, so what we're going to do is jump back to the public input. And again, the, what we had done was advertise tonight as a night that people who want to express an opinion about the naming of the middle school, high school, and our policy could come in and discuss it with the committee or give their point of view. Just as a little bit of background, I think everyone's aware of the fact that in the fall back in October, there was a Mark article on the Tom Brady Mark seeking to name the middle school after Charlie Jones. The longstanding policy of the school committee dating all the way back to 1974 is that the, we would not name a middle school or a high school after an individual. That was a very basic policy, so what we did was we tried to take a look at our policy, but at the same time, we wanted input from the public. We did get a letter from the, from town council stating that it ought, under current charter and file, there's an order for us to actually name a middle school or a high school after an individual. It would have to be approved by both the school committee and by Tom Brady. And I know the majority of the school committee has expressed an interest in continuing on with that policy and not naming a middle school or a high school after an individual. So, at this time, I'm going to ask for any input from the public. If John or Jeff have anything to say. I thought there might be more people in here than I thought.
My thought is to keep present policy, you know, name the middle school or high school after any individual. It sounded like the last meeting I was, I was at, you were discussing the proposed change in your policy. It seemed to be a little cumbersome, multiple pages. I, I think if you keep it basic and then leave it up to whoever is sitting in your shoes 10, 20, 30 years from now, they can determine whether or not...
When we take that, it'll probably be us.
Weekend at Bernie's? But, you know, if you, if the thought is to name a particular classroom or a particular location within the middle school or high school after a particular individual, I think you'll want to leave it up to whoever's sitting in your shoes to make that determination. I, I would tend to err on the side of less is better in terms of your policy, be less specific as my public input.
Jeff?
I just have a question. I have, at one of the previous school committees, Karen had quoted an idea of naming Main Street or proposing Main Street could be a suitable location for being named for Charlie Jones. Has there been any requests by the folks that were interested in naming the school or any change in their approach?
No, but I do recall, at least, and I had a number of discussions with Mr. Beverly, and I think that was something they would consider, Jeff. They certainly haven't come back, because I think they wanted to see where this was going to go before they, they came back and made that request. But I, I'm guessing that that could be forthcoming. That's possible. So, I'd open it up to the school committee members as soon as we can. We have a draft policy. I tend to agree with Mr. Delaney on this, but my only change would be that rather than leave the policy we have, and again, what I would like to do is just amend the policy to say that any naming of schools, middle school, high school, would have to be approved by the school committee in town meeting. I mean, that's, that's what essentially the water is, but, you know, I'll act as to the other members of the school committee. I know Cliff did a lot of work, and I think she did a lot of work on drafting a policy. So, we'll open it up for discussion.
The, the reason we went for a more expanded version was that in some discussion with Kathy Willis, the thinking was that we should have a circle process rather than just a simple pop-up name and see if, see how far it went. And so, we, we looked around for where there was a policy with some other district, and Acton, Foxborough had a fairly intense policy that made some sense. It had, it had some criteria and some process that went through it that would ideally, if the committee was interested in naming something, that that name, naming process would draw in names from the community as a candidate names. And then that would be sorted through by a committee, so made up of various community members. And that's basically the policies that we've developed. Certainly, you know, my words have passed the bells, and I don't really have any pride of authorship in anything. I'm happy to listen to what's going on and have others who are involved, but because they come up with a, with their own view of it, and that's what we're trying to do here. And some of the things that we had in the list, the rights and criteria, I think the one that, that got the most negative feeling, I thought it had a lot of negative feeling, was that the person that we were naming for had to have been deceased, and that got a lot of rebuttal. And, and they, and as I said, in association with that, that the reason for that is that sometimes people that you would name something for because they've done some great things in their life, then end up by spoiling it somehow. Coaching at University of Pennsylvania comes to mind. We've had an instance here in town of somebody that was very well thought of, some, some awards named after him, and, you know, things, few, things didn't turn out so good in the end. And that, if it's a, I guess if it's an award, you can start giving the award or, or come up with a different name for an award, but if it's a building or a part of a building, it makes that much, that much harder to do. And so, I, I think that was a, one of the, the main sticky spots in the criteria that we came up with. But there's another, you know, a lot of other criteria. Most of the others are pretty easy to, to work around. Those are the kind of criteria that you would expect that somebody would have put forward. And we had, we had one of those that we named an art room after, someone who basically gave to the, to the children here an amount equal to the cost of the art room on a first rate basis, that, that would seem like it would, you know, establish a little bit of a, a good reason for naming after them. But, you know, I'm, I'm interested in, in feedback. We, we have another meeting coming up on Thursday to work on this and modify it based on input we get tonight. Jay?
Someone had mentioned that there was a policy and procedure in place at the Parks, Town Parks and Rec, and I contacted them, and they do not have a policy. It's kind of, it goes before the board's law, and I believe, and then they can take it to town meeting, and that's how it gets named, so they really don't have a process for this.
Basically, yeah.
Yeah.
Mel?
I'm pretty much in favor of the existing policy. However, I do like the regulations that were drawn up, the F T C A R, a procedure to follow when we're going to name a building. I, I like those regulations a lot. I go, I go back and forth on the whole issue of whether we should take off the, the portion of the current policy that says that the high school and middle school will always be named after North Reading because I strongly support that part of the policy. I understand your issue. What you're saying is we should take that out and leave it up to the committee. I think that that should be part of the policy, and so if the committee wants to change it or make it a little harder for the mighty future committee, they'll have to change the policy first before they...
I mean, I agree with your premise. I agree with your underlying premise. I'm just saying that the policy should reflect with the lawyers, the lawyers that noted a name of a building, it has to be approved by the school committee and by town meeting. I agree with you that I do not mind to, to name a middle school or a high school after an individual. I'm just saying that to make it a little bit more straightforward. I think there's some good things in this draft.
I like the, as I said, I like those regulations. I think, I think the regulations, so it's not just every time we do it, we could end up doing it a different way. At least with this, there's something we have to follow. Now, this might not be the perfect number of steps, et cetera, but I think it covers all the issues. It gives other people a chance to make recommendations. If one group comes forward, they want to name, you know, this room here after somebody, then we could open it up to other suggestions. It's not just a one-person thing. So, that's why I like, I like Cliff's draft here.
What if we, what if we do this? We've got another meeting on November 24th, the Policy Subcommittee meeting on Thursday this week. Why don't we see if they can cull down or reduce a little bit the actual policy, and then as Mel suggested, as Cliff was drafted, make the rules and regulations kind of where it's going to go. So, to get the policy to a point where it's relatively straightforward, and then try to back it up with, and again, I thought that Cliff's draft of the, of the regulations was, was pretty good.
Yeah, I like it.
So, you know what, Cliff? So, if the policy is more concise, and then the regulations define the procedure to go forward if we're going to go forward and do this.
I still don't...
I'm not crazy about being deceased.
I don't support that either, personally. I, I understand what Cliff's saying, and I know things can happen, but I don't, I think sometimes it's nice to recognize people when they're still alive and make them kind of see the appreciation that the community has for them, so that's kind of where I'm leaning on.
Yeah, you take the same stuff. Geez, you really deserve it if you're still alive.
Right. Really healthy, we can't name...
But, you know, and Cliff raised a good point. I mean, Joe Paterno is, depending on which side of that coin you're on, is a good example. Problem is after somebody dies, you can discover things about them.
Right.
That, you know, also would warrant...
We could have a deceased, but for like five to 10 years.
No, we know who they were. So, all right, why don't we do that? Since you're meeting on Thursday, see if we can make the policy a little more concise, and then support it with the regulations. And, you know what? If you guys could circulate it for the rest of the committee members, so we have it before the 24th, we could go over it a little bit more detail.
Yeah.
Okay. Sounds good.
We'll get it in the packet anyway. Yeah. But I really want the opportunity to say this. All right.
Jeff? Is the policy just for the whole building, or is the policy both building and, say, naming rooms?
It's for everything, right? It would be any school department, yeah, anything.
This kind of covers everything.
So, you're, you're not distinguishing, for example, just, you know, whether somebody's has died or is still alive? That would be for even naming a room? I mean, so any, any naming at all, even if it's for a science...
Again, I don't know the majority is fair without deceased, you know, provision.
Right. Or maybe distinguishing between buildings and something less than the building.
I think that, you know, that doesn't stop me from wasting my opinion.
That's right.
After 75, you can do anything you want.
So, that, you're supposed to satisfy the allegation that, you know... Unfortunately, it's got to wait for a long time.
I know. So, I put it forth for Park. I mean, people can discuss it, and if it falls, it falls. I can say, my pride and authorship went away 60 years ago.
Well, I just wanted to cut a point that Mel, you brought up about, and just in terms of, you know, the building for the whole town versus rooms. It's almost like, you know, almost feel like two different minds, whether it's for the building as a whole or for, say, naming the art room.
Yeah.
Some, you might even have different, different rules for the whole building versus individual rooms or something.
Well, we're starting on the premise again, that, that policy that we have is just, it's two sentences basically. We're not naming middle school or high school after an individual. And that's been in place for 40 years. So, it is a long-standing policy that has withstood kind of the, the timeframe. But let's, yeah, let's, let's see if we can come up and see if we can get it circulated, maybe before the packages go out. And then on the 24th, we still entertain some public input on this, but the further along we get, not yours.
And I do want to throw one, and this is specifically to the Charlie Jones issue. I have to give credit to my wife on this one, but we have that access road that comes into the school now, and it's a really long access road, and it gets you to both, both schools. And, you know, one of the things that the sponsors of naming these middle school after Charlie Jones were saying was, you know, the way he did things, this and that, and my wife suggested, why don't we call that street the Charles Jones Way? Which is, you know, you can call so each ways.
Street sign up.
Right, and have a street sign up, the Charles Jones Way, and it leads to the both schools. I, I really have to give my wife credit, I wish it was my idea, but I really like that idea. So, I'm just throwing it out there for the sponsors of the other item to, to think about, something they might want to think about.
And just a little advice, next time somebody has a good idea, just take it as your own call.
Don't, don't give credit to the person who originated it. Okay.
All right, so let's do that. Let's, let's take another look at this. I think we're getting closer. I think that the committee, overall view is that we're not inclined to name the middle school or the high school after an individual. And I've got a lot of feedback on that, probably more feedback on that than a lot of other issues that we've had before, so the last 10 or 15 years.
The most feedbacks is that, the grading and the band issue, that Johnny Graham has that issue back many years ago, 2005.
Well, and then of course, the, the other thing, I would have to say, is the park testing as well.
Oh, the park testing, that was pretty intense, yeah.
There's a lot of input on that. Okay, so we closed the public input part of the, the meeting, and we're going to move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the Special Education Practices and Procedures Manual that Valerie Flynn is going to give a presentation on.
Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the school committee, Superintendent, and since you're there, my...
He's awesome.
...rockstar. I want to thank Superintendent for asking me to be here tonight and for you agreeing so that I could share with you the North Reading Public Schools Procedure Manual that we created this summer. Why did we create this? Well, when we were doing our self-assessment to the current coordinated program review, we were asked to, as we self-assess, give supporting documents regarding what the department is doing and how we're doing it. And it came to my attention as we went through it that we didn't have an updated manual. The manual is where you get a lot of these procedures. There were clearly procedures in place, but we didn't have them all in one place, and we didn't have something that staff could rely upon that was updated and new. And there were some things that had changed in law that we didn't have reflected in procedures. So, after we completed the self-assessment, we took some of the procedures that we had documented, and then wrote some procedures for some of the newer regulations. Some of those come out through law, some of those come out through Department of Education and advisories, and we wrote those up, and we created this manual. So, I'm sure you read it cover to cover. It's, it's a fascinating document, and we'll be reading it in public behind reading. I was tempted to you to put a joke in someplace. What do I do with my grad students when I assign the reading, and I put something in the middle that has nothing to do with anything and see if I can, how many of them have really read it? So, I was going to put a joke in, but the way the two of you were at the superintendent's retirement dinner, I felt I couldn't compete. No way.
I felt a little disjointed. It was 43 pages, and I didn't know it was fallen both sides. So, I was really thrown. I said, boy, this seems...
Right. So, to be brief, what we did with this manual is, and we, after presenting this, we will be uploading in PDF to Google Docs with the help of our assistant superintendent. And in the back of the document, where you saw appendix, there are forms and documents. Those will be uploaded in a way that staff can then use them online, complete them when they need to be completed as if they were a Word document, so that they can do it right on their computer. There always is the technology. Some of the highlights of what we've added are, we created a new summary for team meetings so that when parents leave a team meeting, they have something that describes what went on in the team meeting. There's something in an individualized educational plan called the Service Delivery Grid. We give this one as a service delivery grid, so if there have been any changes to it as a result of the discussions at the meeting, parents are given this document so they know what the changes will be, what will come out in the I E P that they will receive within 10 days from the meeting. We have also created an observation agreement. An observation agreement is when a family asks to have somebody, an outside evaluator or an independent advisor, come and observe in a school. We created a document that has a description of the procedures for once people are out in school. It has to be signed off by the parent so that we know we have permission for the evaluator or observer to come in. It's signed off by the principal so they know who will be coming into their building, and it gives a record for all that the observation has taken place, and then it's been done in a manner that is least disruptive to the school environment. And we have that in place now. We also have an autism checklist that was, that was created, that actually was taken from an advisory that the Department of the DESI put out a few years ago. What this does is it guides staff when having a team meeting for a child who is on the autism spectrum, because when creating an I E P, the children with that specific disability, there are a number of areas that you must address in the team meeting. Team meetings can sometimes be fairly involved. This allows whoever is chairing the meeting, whether it's one of the coordinators or a teacher, to make sure that they've covered all the elements for the I E P. And then we also put in forms that were previously in our I E P program, but for example, it's refusal of somebody from a team meeting. So if somebody comes to a team meeting but they can't stay for the whole team meeting, it's a form that'll admit, who's the parent, the opportunity to agree to the person leaving the team meeting. Though that's on our IEP program, we put it into this document so these people have it ready and handy in the meeting when they, when they can't always look off at the computer during that time. So all of this is done, I would like to say, part of it came to bear because we noticed that we didn't have an updated manual for the Coordinated Program Review. But more importantly, what it does is it allows the district, all the schools, to be following the same procedures, doing things the same way, and gives for parents the knowledge that if a child is at an elementary school and for any reason transfers to another elementary school and moves on to middle or high school, that the procedures are in place and that they're consistent. And I also want to, you saw on the cover, Kristen Burke, who's our Coordinator of Elementary Education, Maureen Ryan, who is our coordinator of Secondary Education, along with Kim Miles. We all worked on this together this summer so that we can have it ready for the fall. I'm happy to take any questions.
Now, was this your initiative that got this going, to update the manual?
Well, all of us.
It was? Okay. I just want to thank you for doing that. You know, I understand, there's a lot of work that's gone into it. And was there any parent input into putting the manual together?
No, not, not to the extent that I probably would have liked, but we ran it time-crunched.
Okay. Had parents had an opportunity to take a look at this?
Not yet, not until I bring it to you.
Okay.
At that point, then I won't tell the CPAC about it.
It was mostly your team that more or less put this together?
Yes.
And it incorporates all statutory obligations?
Oh, yes, absolutely. You know, it's not a, it doesn't come out of the vacuum. There were, when you look to do the Coordinated Program Review, they have what's called SEs. Those are the special education criteria. Basically, what we did, there were fifty-seven of them. So what we did was we went through each criteria and said, do we need to have a written procedure for this? Or did we not have a written procedure for this and we need to? Or is there one in place that may need a little tweaking? So we basically followed the Coordinated Program Review criteria. This is a living document. As we go along, if we, and we may need to keep something, we can amend it.
You can amend it, you can modify it, you can add to it.
We will add to it, and then we give, the, when it's up on Google Docs, there will be three people who can go in and change. That's why we're putting it in as a PDF, but they'll always need discussion, all of us. And we also presented this, we went around to each school in September, and we sat with the special education staff, so the principal, it's presented to the principals, should they read it cover to cover to. And we presented it to staff, and we highlighted areas that might be new for them. So we did little mini-trains, but we did it at each schools, they have the opportunity to ask questions.
Any questions? No, I have some questions. The, the forms we added, are those forms required by the state or some of them required, some of them just?
Some of them are required, some of them are forms that are just good practice.
I was saying, it'll make it easier to communicate with parents and with staff as to what's going on with the specific students.
Absolutely.
And the other thing is, you mentioned, you said, this is an updated manual, so I'm assuming we had one, but it was just not as comprehensive as it needed to be?
Yes.
Okay. And I add one other question, not specifically related to this, but related to the Coordinated Program Review. We did a lot of the work, or most of the work, last year. Will it report this year? Is that how that happens, or how does that work?
We did the work, they now have to do a self-assessment online. On December first, the Chair of the Review Committee will be coming out to meet with us, and the work really starts. So, for a number of things, we will put, we will now upload this manual, because there is before that we've presented documentation, well, we now have documentation. But then we will need to, for every SE, show what we've done since last year to improve and then, to improve or change practice, and then you need evidence for that. So the work has just begun.
And when will we get the report from them? Next year?
They will come out, they're, the onsite visit is March eighth, they will be out here for five days. Typically, with a March date, they probably won't get a report from them until the summer or the fall.
Okay. Cliff, you have a comment? You did a wonderful job. Janine?
I think it's incredible. It's, I think, something that all school districts should do.
Thank you.
I like the idea too, it's always good to keep in mind that the elementary schools are all on the same page for the, procedurally doing anything, to be honest with you. And the other thing is, obviously, you'd be receptive from public, from parents, if something comes up with the parents, it's problematic.
Absolutely. Parents, actually, parents help, you know, certainly, the CPAC, they bring something to our attention. We now have a way to rectify it or to show them where the consistency would be. So parents are very important. And in answering your question and saying, we didn't get input, it's not because we don't value it, but we needed to have something.
Yeah.
And that's why we created it as a living document, so that we could share it, we knew that we should share with anyone, so rather than do a tip for the folks on the ground, we want to start using some of these things.
Thank you. John, do you have anything?
I have to, I want to commend Valerie. Thank you for not only coming tonight, for the extraordinary amount of work she has done over the last several months. I think she is being humbled, this really wasn't an initiative taken on by Valerie, she and her staff, and I thank you for that. So Valerie, thank you. Nice, nice job, and thank you for coming.
Sometimes, this is the type of work that you just keep putting off, you want to do, and you did a great job on it.
Well, there were a few days in the summer where we found a lot of other things to do before we, okay, we have to work on this now.
I can't imagine, I would have focused on this, I mean, I just wish I knew it was double-sided when I first. It's excellent work, thank you very much.
Thank you. And can I just, I know I'm supposed to keep it short, but let me just thank one more time, I did the committee. You were very kind on the night that we introduced new staff, and you acknowledged my presence, but I didn't feel it was my place to come up to the microphone, because you had truly new people, I was only newly new. But, as you know, I retired five years ago as a special ed director, and here I am. The work is hard, but I've never actually felt overworked, because how do you feel overworked when you're doing something you love? So you've given me, again, the opportunity to work with children with disabilities and their families and the staff, and I really want to thank you for that. It's good, it's my pleasure to be here, it's a wonderful community, and to have a second opportunity to stay in the district.
Well, we appreciate you staying on, for leaving, you helped us out immensely at a time that we really needed you.
Well, you know, you can do like the sports players and just come out of retirement.
Right.
You're allowing me not to come out, I didn't have to come out last night.
I think it's easy when you have a fantastic school committee.
Yes, absolutely, I can be glad to say thank you tonight.
All right. Valerie, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great job.
Thank you, Valerie.
Okay, next on the agenda, I'm going to ask Mr. Bernard to give us an update on the Secondary School Building Project.
Thank you, Mr. Bernard, so, yes, just a few things to note. I think most of you are aware, but maybe not all, and certainly for the community here, that the Secondary School Building, we last met on October twenty-eighth and on November sixth, and both of these meetings were held at the distance learning, after what they're wearing now, with a primary focus being on a punch list of items that had been developed pretty much throughout the month of October. And the walkthrough that had begun on this past Thursday, on November the sixth, I think proved to be very, very helpful in us identifying some of the things that we still hope to see resolved in the new high school. We will be continuing that walkthrough on this coming Thursday, November thirteenth, two thirty. And I think it was important that we had a good showing of people from our professional team, as well as members of the Secondary School Building Committee and school department personnel to accompany us on that walkthrough. And I do think it was a good step in the right direction for us to get the retention that we're hoping for, to resolve some of the outstanding items, as I said, in the high school. As well, the underground utility installation continues to progress well throughout the new middle school, as well as the installation of the electrical conduits, and there's extensive amounts of work going on with the plumbing to service the new middle school. The project manager has informed me that he is pleased with the, with the status of the steel that is being erected, mostly in buildings E and half of the new middle school. The E building being the two-story structure. And it doesn't take, it doesn't take anyone in the trades to know that the facade, the masonry facade, the brick facade, is progressing well on the new middle school also. The roof on E building, again, that's the two-story structure of the middle school is ongoing and nearing completion. The principals of the, of the project inform me that this is significant work, it's a major milestone, because it's going to contribute to their ability to be able to work inside through the winter months, particularly around the, the electrical work and the framing of the wall. So it's important that that structure near closure so that they can, they can tackle that large piece of work, so. In all in all, I think it's fair to say that the, that the schedule that's in place for the work on the middle school is progressing as, as the, as the project manager will hopefully agree.
Thank you, John. Yeah, I just want to remind everybody too, that we're still a construction site here. Alls you have to do is walk out the back entrance or the front entrance, either one, and you're faced with the ongoing middle school renovation. So it's a major construction site still that has put some restrictions on us overall as far as the site's concerned. I also want to say that we were under a very strict deadline to get into this building on September eighth, so that we did move in here, there were some things that, on the punch list, that maybe could have been completed if we had a later date to move in, but bottom line is, we had to get in here. So, as John said, we spent three hours last Thursday walking through here with our project manager, our contractor, and our architect, and essentially pointing out things that we thought needed to be addressed. We didn't even finish in three hours, we're going to continue this week as well to continue the walkthrough. We are getting a positive response from the people that we're dealing with, and, and I think, hopefully, you know, probably by the end of the Christmas vacation, we'll have a lot of the punch list items fixed and addressed, and, and we'll begin to see the finished product here at the high school. But there is still a lot of work to be done, so I'll turn over the elements of committee.
And then we can move on to the warranty issues.
Yes. Warranty issues, and then, of course, the middle school, which is something that we've got to, again, work very closely with our, with our construction team and our project manager on moving forward there. Janine, do you have anything to add?
No.
Well?
John, I don't know if you mentioned the vote that was taken regarding.
I'd like to, I was just going to ask Mr. Bernard if you could just help the guardrail.
Yes.
Yeah, I'd like to mention that the Secondary School Building Committee on Thursday night at their meeting voted to endorse the installation of a guardrail and the access road going out between the sidewalk and the road, as more of a safety measure than anything else. I'm told that that installation will begin in three to four weeks.
Yeah, and again, I think the maximum cost that we allowed was forty-five thousand dollars, that put the installation of the guardrail, the paving, and we're going to go along with it. And again, it's a safety issue.
And the town was supposed to come back with another price on Friday, I don't know if they?
I have not seen that, if that was the plan, that they would have a price Friday.
Right, and we were hoping that that would be lower, the same, the same way they came back with a price for the paved annual.
Sherman Road.
Sherman Road, that was lower than the other price.
Not, not like they came back with a price that was lower on Sherman Road, but they did a great job in a very, very short amount of time.
Right.
To get Sherman Road paved and get the sidewalk done, and that was our DPW director that kind of all did that, so. But again, we are moving forward, we are progressing, and, you know, so far, so good, I think. Any comments from the audience? Good, thank you.
I'm just, I'm going to raise the same issue I raised last week, and I'm just not comfortable with us not having live broadcasts of our meetings, and I wish, I just don't see that happening before early next year, and I just don't think that that's a good thing, and I would, you know, I'd hate to leave meeting here, leave this as our meeting facility for a short term, but I think that at some point, we need a, we need a definitive date as to when the cameras are going to be in here and when we can broadcast live. And I guess the other question is, and our NORCAM representative might know this, is there any way to broadcast live from here now?
There is a possibility, but I don't think it's really feasible at the moment.
Okay.
I mean, I couldn't, Rob would be the one to ultimately.
Because I know we broadcasted live from the, the town meeting, right?
Yeah, that was kind of a special, kind of patchwork job.
Okay.
You know, so, the whole different kind of deal.
Let's do two things, Val. I mean, why don't you find out whether or not, if we can broadcast live under those current circumstances? And the second thing, John, let's be reminded that we're going to ask what they think this is going to be completed or not.
I guess you'll get into it. How about if I have a report to you on, all right, on the twentieth?
That'd be great.
But I think we should try to see what.
Right, we should have definition on that prior to our next SSBC meeting.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have the annual school trip for the operating high school varsity hockey team. They normally travel down to either Martha's Vineyard or Cape Cod, and John, you going to present that for us?
I can. So in your package, you should have a letter from, from our athletic director, Mr. Johnson, regarding the, yes, Mr. Bernard said it, the annual trip this, this year to Sandwich, Sandwich, Mass, on Monday, February sixteenth, and Tuesday, February seventeenth, they'll be doing the February school vacation. We, we participate annually in some sort of an invitational hockey tournament several years and on the Cape, and it's always gone well. Students will be traveling with their parents and staying with their parents, but we do, we do like to have the school committee endorse the, endorse the trip proposal, and I do recommend it.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the high school hockey trip? Some, a motion by Mel, second by Cliff. Any further discussion here? Not also carefully say aye. Aye opposed, none, motion carries, four to none.
Thank you.
Minutes, we have the August sixth, two thousand and fourteen open session minutes. I believe that was the workshop, the goal-setting workshop.
Yes.
No? No? Which workshop was it?
It was supposed to be the goal-setting.
Well, that's right.
We got off track.
But it wasn't, because I didn't come to the goal-setting, so it wasn't a goal-setting thing, because I was here.
I think Mrs. Wells.
Yes, Mrs. Wells, you did.
Oh, that's right.
And you were there, and I took the notes, but it was supposed to be the goal workshop, and we never did our goals.
All right, what do the minutes say, because I haven't looked at them?
No, this is, we talked about naming the school facilities, that's what we focused on.
Yeah.
And the booster policy.
Okay, so the minutes accurately reflect that?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve those minutes?
I think already made it.
All right, we have a motion by Mel, we have a second.
Second.
Second by Cliff. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye opposed, none, motion carries, four to none. We have the August sixteenth, two thousand and fourteen executive session minutes.
August sixth.
Sixth.
Make a motion to approve.
We're seeing a little lines. Okay, we have a motion by Mel, the second by Cliff, to approve the August sixth executive session minutes. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye opposed, none, motion carries, four to none. September twenty-second, two thousand and fourteen open session minutes.
And the visitors, it should be Mrs. Jane Whitney, I believe. Did I have her name wrong?
Yes, Jane Whitney.
Okay, we make that correction.
And that was the only, you know, last one.
Motion to approve, that's correct.
I'm making a motion to approve this, correct it. Second.
Okay, motion by Mel, second by Cliff. Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye opposed, none, motion carries, four to none. And finally, October twenty-seventh, two thousand and fourteen open session minutes.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion by Mel, second by Cliff. No further discussion, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye opposed, none, motion carries, four to none. You don't have a budget update, Michael?
No.
There's no staffing changes, John?
There are none.
Okay. We do have bits and donations. John, you want to present those?
Certainly, I'd be happy to. We have three requests for acceptance of donations this evening. The first is for six hundred and ninety-nine dollars from the Friends of North Reading Cheerlead, this is in support of the girls' cheerleading team. Would you like to approve these individually?
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
Move to accept with gratitude.
Second, oh, motion by Cliff, second by Janine. Any further discussion here? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye opposed, none, motion carries, four to none.
Thank you. The second one is a donation from the Little School PTO, it's for three hundred and ninety dollars, and the donation is to help support the costs of second-grade field trips to Drummond Farm that are to take place on November twenty-fifth and June seventeenth of two thousand and fifteen.
Thank you, move.
Second.
That time, we're going to have to give it to Mel, the second.
Thank you.
Motion by Cliff, second to Mel. It's like a little jumping. Any further discussion here?
Any further discussion here, alls in favor, please say aye. Aye opposed, none, motion carries, four to nothing.
And the last one is, as a result of the Young Americans Program, the $2,600 donation to support the arts program in the area, in the district, across the district, elementary school, middle school, and high school.
Move to approve. What's the grant? Motion by Cliff, second by Janine. And again, I think anytime we get the Americans back here, it was a win-win situation, it was fantastic, we should stay in touch with that, and so, to see how many times we can get them back here. So we have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion here, alls in favor, please say aye. Aye opposed, none, motion carries, four to nothing. Subcommittee reports, the policy subcommittee met on October 30th. Do you guys need to give a further update on that?
We had another issue, I'm sorry, I don't want to jump ahead. We reviewed the policy on discipline. And concluded that we didn't really need to change it, because the policy on discipline has a clause at the end that says that we are following, following the information that's in the school handbooks, the individual school handbooks. And our individual school handbooks have the latest version of the policy.
And we approve those anyway.
Right, we approve those, so we're fully covered and it's a rational way to do it. And besides which, we then don't have to bring out the, in the elementary school handbooks about the kids being felons or something like that.
But you didn't sneak any, like, no tolerance stuff or anything? Okay, thank you, Cliff. Subcommittee schedule, we have, as Cliff already stated, we have a policy subcommittee for, scheduled for November 13th at 5:30 PM.
The North Cam is the 20th.
North Cam is, that's. The North Cam.
It's not the 17th, it's the 20th.
The 20th, not the 17th, and that's at 7:00 PM. We have an athletics subcommittee meeting scheduled for November 18th at 12:30. The secondary school building committee next meets on November 18th in this room at 5:30. And we have a finance planning team on November 21st, that's a Friday morning, I believe at 8:15 AM. I'm going to ask Superintendent to give the administrative report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A few items to note tonight. First, very excited to announce that the Secretary of Education for the state of Massachusetts, Dr. Matthew Malone, will be here to tour the district on Thursday. I've asked Assistant Superintendent Patrick Daly to accompany me on tour. I received a call, it was an unsolicited call from the secretary of his office. Dr. Malone is intent on visiting as many schools across the state as he possibly can, and he would like to come to North Reading. So I'm naturally going to showcase for him the new high school, but maybe.
Do you know what time he's coming to?
He's coming at noon.
Noon?
Yes, I'm expecting, he's going to be here for about an hour.
Will he try to tour our schools?
I don't think that's going to be part of the schedule. When I told his administrative assistant about our new school, she seemed pretty intent on him wanting to see that. So if time allows, we'll certainly take him to the middle school and maybe the bash where they're pretty close in proximity to each other, but.
How do you feel about if he wants attending?
I think that would be fine, certainly, absolutely. I think he would welcome that. I think he's anticipating being here for maybe an hour to 90 minutes.
Okay.
So he knew we were going to be right here in the high school. I wanted to update you all on the issue of the full day kindergarten. As you know, on October 14th, there was a small group of parents here who expressed some concerns and some questions around full day kindergarten in the district. And I wanted you to know that Michael Connelly and I hosted a meeting with two parents on Wednesday, November 5th, just this past Wednesday. And I would characterize that meeting as being a very positive meeting. It was constructive, it was, I think, one to just really kind of establish, first of all, a dialogue and to have a conversation. And to hear from parents what they saw as being some of their concerns and to set some goals for continuing our conversation. We do have a second meeting scheduled with those parents on December 10th. And I would anticipate that we would have, that is, we, Michael and I, would have a more comprehensive report for you sometime in the winter, based on those conversations. But I thought it was important for you to know that we had engaged in a conversation at a meeting, and I would characterize it as very positive and productive.
Mel and I both were approached, I think, by people who suggested that if you had free full day kindergarten, that there was additional Chapter 70 money available.
Right, Mr. Chairman, I mean, Michael and I, this actually came about because I was, after I talked to you, I discussed with North Andover, which is going to get a large amount of additional Chapter 70. But Michael's done a lot of research on this, and each community is treated differently. And because we are already above the minimum threshold for Chapter 70 that the state has set, we wouldn't qualify for that money.
Because I know, I think it was Walden, who sued almost the full amount to cover it.
I know, so unfortunately, it's not a one-size-fits-all, it all depends on, each community is a little bit different on how that Chapter 70 formula is working for, currently for that community. I've talked to actually five or six other business managers who are all looking into this and trying to determine why it's different in different communities. But in that, we've built conversations with a member of the Department of Education who's in charge of the Chapter 70 program as well. And essentially because of what Mel just said, because North Reading, historically, the Chapter 70 formula has kind of been to effect in education reform back in 1993. Over the years, we've historically been above our minimum target share of a percent of foundation, which is that 17.5%. We've historically been receiving much more than that, so we don't qualify for that additional down payment date when there's a major change, like adding pupils to your foundation enrollment by going to a full day kindergarten. Whereas a community like North Andover, for instance, is pretty much at their targets, slightly under, they would see the full benefit of those students being added into their foundation enrollment, so that's.
North Andover, about 15%, so they're not at the 17.5% number. So that's why you see that extra million dollars. I think, Michael, when you said we get $25 per student.
We would get them, we would default to the minimum of.
That's not going to cover, that's not going to cover the full day kindergarten.
We would get $25 per pupil, and we would add, based on the current enrollment structure that exists today, we would have an 85 FTEs, or 85, it would be 85 times $25, it's a little over $2,025 you'd get in addition.
So you're going to continue, you guys are going to continue to meet with?
We are, we have a meeting scheduled for December 10th. And what, all of what Michael and Mel were just talking about was explained at that meeting, and I think it was well-received, I think they understand.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. The next item I just want to share with you is really more of a public service announcement. We're going to host some alumni tours of the new high school on Thanksgiving morning for any recent grads, really for the community as a whole, but geared specifically toward maybe those students who had left for college before the open house that we held here in September. And give them an opportunity to come and see, to come and see their new high school. Again, just a reminder to you all, I had talked about this at the last school committee meeting, but I just want to remind you, and for anybody in the audience, just pack the houses, it is the season. That on Wednesday, the Director of Finance and Operations and I will be hosting a meeting at 4:30 on Wednesday, November 12th, to review the recently adopted policy by the school committee on relations with booster and support organizations.
Everybody's been contacting John and Mel?
I sent out a mass email twice, so that's to all families across the district. And there was a targeted email to anyone who had contacted me about their interest.
Can we make sure the Diamond Club, because they contacted me?
I did, I did.
Okay, so they've been.
And I believe Scott Ellis is the one that told me he was going to be here.
Good.
I did reach out to him specifically.
Okay.
Just an update for you and a reminder, I guess, that on November 13th, this coming Thursday, the school committee is on the agenda for the board of selectmen meeting for a joint appointment of Mr. Lepret, the new high school principal, to be a member of the secondary school building committee. And I'm told that that's going to be on the agenda of October 7th, this meeting at Thursday.
We should have three members there, so.
And the last thing, I just want to announce to you the desire to award special project stipends to the two administrators, Mr. Lepret for his work with student activities that count here at the high school, and for Ms. Kathy O'Carroll, the middle school principal, to serve as a mentor, principal, and his new role as the high school principal.
Thank you, John. Any questions, Superintendent, regarding the report, the straight report? Okay. Correspondents, John, we don't have any to deal with?
There is none.
And future business, we have a November 13th meeting at 7:15, as John just stated, that's the appointment. That's at Tom Hallroom 14. Then we have a regular meeting on November 24th at 7 o'clock. December 8th, 7 o'clock, and December 22nd at 7 o'clock, all here in the distance learning lab. And just so people are aware, we do have, on one of those dates, I believe it's the 24th of November, or it's parent teacher conference, so beware of that when coming up here to Park, it's going to be pretty crowded. And on December, let's see, high school presentation, annual high school presentation on December 8th, 4th. Any other business?
I just, because of all the changes going on in the district and all the personnel moving around, we didn't have anybody at the Mass Mask Conference this year down on Cape Cod. But they did pass an interesting resolution by a vote of 69 to 21 with three extensions, which is asking the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education to reexamine Common Core standards in Park, and to conduct further examination of options for a state evaluation and accountability system. And to substantially involve educators and school committee members in the process of choosing an assessment instrument, and to refrain from committing to any instrument before the process is complete. Now, this is non-binding, I mean, the Department of.
Well, also, it was a request.
Right. But I thought it was interesting, and you know, this is the stuff that probably should have happened two years ago before they adopted these things. The other question I have, and, Jerry, you might know this, or somebody else in the committee, the Secretary of Education serves at the pleasure of the governor, correct?
That's a, I believe that's a gubernatorial appointment.
So Matt Malone is probably, well, it depends on.
Well, yeah, he was obviously appointed by Governor Patrick.
Right.
And I think he was appointed, I just remember meeting him, it's at least, it's more than two years ago, I'm almost certain, because I met him at the State House with Kathy Willis a couple of years ago from his first deployment. I don't know, I don't think it's for a term, I think it's at the pleasure of the governor.
And then Mitchell Chester is the chairman of, head of the DESA, correct?
He's the commissioner.
Commissioner. Does he serve at the pleasure of the governor? No, he's elected by the DESA, correct? Okay. The other thing is just interesting, there was a story in the Globe, I think it was yesterday, maybe it was Saturday, actually. Massachusetts wonders whether students are being overtested. It was an interesting story. You know, I think it's a district-by-district issue. I know a lot of the urban districts are quoted in this story, saying, talking about all the numbers of tests and hours they spend, because they're not only giving, you know, MCAS or Park, they're giving a lot of other things that are required by the state. We don't have a lot of those requirements because we're a high-performing district. But if you get a chance to read it, I think it's a, it's a pretty interesting story.
High volume, traffic on the list.
Yes.
We got any issue yet?
Any further business? Hearing none. Ask for motion to adjourn. Motion by Cliff, second by Janine, alls in favor, please say aye. Aye opposed, none, motion carries, four to nothing.